It being 7:30, let us call the Sichuan Planning Board in order. The first item is to accept the agenda for June 14th, 2012. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is an informal discussion for Fifty Country Way. It's proposed mixed-use development. And the applicant/owner is Chris Ford. By way of introduction, before I turn it over to Chris and his team, when we initially started looking at this, subsequently we found that there is a question that's been raised about the bylaw that would be applicable, which is the Village Business Overlay District. What I'd like to do tonight is to not talk about that. Not that we're going to ignore it, but at this point, what I want to do is just to come back and talk around it, see what your proposal is, and how it fits into the existing bylaw. But we can back up and internally work with the zoning enforcement officer to resolve the difference in interpretation of the bylaw. Having said that, Mr. Ford, if you'll introduce your team and give us an overview of what you're looking to do.
Let me move up to the stage. I have with me tonight Greg Morse, who is the engineer for the project. Paul Ford is responsible for the architectural work from the galleries. And we've also had the assistance and advice of Eric Kunde. I own this property for 20 years, and we've been operating. For those of you not familiar, there's a building that stands out front on the right side across the Morning Glories. And we always have to tell people, "Where are we?" We're across the Morning Glories. And that's become a real landmark, as we know in Sichuan. Everybody knows where the Morning Glories is. And we're proud to be next to it. Anyhow, this building, we've been before since 2007. Before the planning board, this is the third time. We've been before design review with myself and with some others who had an option on the property, maybe as many as four or five times. And now we're here again tonight. And I think we're finally, we arrived where we want to be. And I think we're, we found you might want us to be. We were urged to have a retail component to this project, and we have one in the front. And it's of a modest scale. We did something different this time. The previous proposals were going to take down the existing building. And Laura spoke to me that, you know, if there was some way to preserve that or even to relocate it, that a lot of people would appreciate that, to preserve this, you know, classic historic building. And we had to evaluate the economic consequences of that act. But we feel it's in the interests of the town, frankly. And we can live with retaining it. It's a building that requires a lot of maintenance. It's a 11886 building, and it's 130 years old. But we have been doing quite a bit of upgrading to the building internally and externally. And we're going to have it looking like a real showplace in and of itself by the time we're done. And then in the back, Greg and Paul explained further. We have a mixed component on your right of office and residential. And then to the left is all residential. So there are 25 new residential units on the property to augment the existing five units. So we're coming right in at the number 30 total units. And additionally, we have at least four commercial spaces. And it could be divided up a little differently. So having said that, I want to turn it over to Greg this time. And if you have any questions, Paul or Tucker, they can speak.
Sure. Greg Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. I'm just going to pass out a couple copies of our site plan to the audience. Because I know it might be hard for them to see, as well as some of the calculations that we've produced. You can just hand some of those around, it'd be appreciated. This project, I'll touch on the existing site, and the proposed, and the benefits that we are proposing as part of this development. The existing site, located at Fifty Country Way, consists of 61,391 square feet, approximately an acre and a half. It's all upland area. It's located in the business zoning district. It's also located in the Green Bush Village Business Overlay District. Existing building, as Mr. Ford said, you'll see here on the site plan, consists of five rental apartments currently. Right now, there's a parking lot in front of the building. And there's a small parking area in the back of the existing building. It's serviced by municipal water, municipal sewer at this time. Properties are budding us, our property line. You'll see here around the back, it's kind of an L-shaped property. Morning Glories, immediately to the north of us. Land owned behind Charlie Reynolds Store by Charlie Reynolds. This is the garage next to Charlie Reynolds Store. And then the Green Bush commuter rail line, just off our site to the right. So the proposed site, we're hoping to utilize the Village Business Overlay District, which allows the mixed-use buildings. It allows us to do the commercial component, as well as the residential component. We'll be retaining the existing structure and proposing the three new buildings. And we're hoping to phase the project. Each building will be a separate phase of it. This is a presentation of the overall when it's a completed project. Phase one would be the commercial at the front of the property. This is a 1,783 square foot building. We have a rendering of that on this board. See, it's a one-story building. It would be one or two separate units, separate small businesses located at the front of the site. This is a view from Country Way, looking at the property. The second phase would be strictly residential building, Building B. This consists of six one-bedroom apartments and four two-bedroom apartments. And then the third phase would be Building C. This is another mixed-use building. We're proposing in the front here, this portion of the building would be commercial space. It's approximately 2,363 square feet, commercial, on the first floor. And then on the remainder of the first floor and second floor would be two studio apartments, 11 one-bedroom apartments, and two bedroom apartments. We have renderings of those. I won't bring them up, but I'll slide them out this way so you can see them. This is the third building, Building Three. This is a look at the front of the commercial portion. You'll see some of the architectural features. Paul can talk later in detail on those if you'd like. Tried to capture some of the architecture style of the existing building that's out there. Some of the roof lines. So according to the site, we're proposing a number of infrastructure improvements. We're going to be extending the public water service onto the property and extending our sewer connection. It'll be tied into Town Sewer, Town Water. We met informally with Al Bangor, Kevin Cafferty of the DPW. We're looking at possibilities of doing a looped water service, either internally within our site, or the potential for looping it off-site for future development of the plans here. We have a new parking lot, as you can see. The new parking lot is 57 spaces. When you calculate the parking requirements based on the usage, requires between 49 and 56 spaces. So we comply, as you can see. And I think one thing to notice is that we have significant landscaping within the parking areas. You know, we have, in no locations do we have more than eight spaces without a landscaped island. And in most cases, you'll see that there's only three or four spaces. So a lot of green space, a lot of landscaping in this site. We'll be proposing a new drainage system. The drainage will be subsurface under the parking lot. We've done preliminary soils testing, had a very good soil here. It's a really coarse sand material. Should be perfect for an infiltration system. Site grading, you'll know this right up the top of the plan. This is Stockbridge Road. We have topography sloping down onto our site. But our site in general is a flat site. There'll be minimal earthwork here. We're not taking down any significant vegetation. The site is largely cleared already. No need to make any new cuts into any hillsides. This is an excellent site for this type of development. We're looking at upgrading the entrance of the site. We do share a common entrance with the Morning Glories property. Mr. Ford's property has the benefit of an access and utility easement over that property. We're going to be maintaining that existing curb cut. We've engaged a traffic engineer to help us with some of the maneuvers of cars and some of the pedestrian safety concerns that have arisen through our discussions. So we'll be making significant improvements at the entrance to ensure public safety. It's a great location. When you look at traffic, you know, we're right near all the major thoroughfares in town. Country Way, Driftway, 123, 3A. We're also going to be doing an improvement to the public walkway. Right now, out behind us at the MBTA line, as part of the Green Bush project, they had created from Driftway, a public walkway or bikeway that comes up and it actually ends just off-site to the south. We're going to connect into that public walkway, bring that onto our site. And then we'll have sidewalks all the way out to Country Way to tie into that existing system. So the residents of this development here will be able to walk down that pathway. And anyone else will be able to walk from Country Way through that pathway over to Dunkin' Donuts, over to the Marina, over to the bike path along the Driftway. It'll really be a public benefit by having that connection there without having to walk up Stockbridge Road and around through the train station area. Open space, as I mentioned, we've tried to maintain above the bylaw. The bylaw requires 20% open space. The current proposal has 29% of the site is open space, approximately 17,800 square feet. And timelines for this, we're hoping to submit a definitive site plan, you know, pending input from you. We had our preliminary design review meeting. We're hoping to get the ball rolling and submit a formal site plan within the next one to three months. We've started discussions with our traffic engineer. We're kind of ironing out some of those details. And as Chairman Lindbacher said, we did come up with another detail as part of zoning. We're trying to determine the best way to address that at this point. Hopeful that we can. It's clear that the bylaw was meant to include this property in the Green Bush Overlay District. So we're just trying to iron out the details on that. We're all eager to work with the town, ready to make progress at this site and hope that this proposal is, you know, better than the last and something that we can work together on.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, let me just clarify. We actually do not have an application in front of us. What we have is, we have a proposal that's come back in a couple of different forms. And because of the complexity and the density of it, well, we've asked this for to continue an informal discussion, and Chris and his team have done that. So just to, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of the fact that there is no formal application in front of us. This is a discussion where we can all put our input in so that we can give the Ford's a sense of direction in terms of what we see and what we think about this particular project. Having said that, we can, let me talk, Laura, if you've got any comments in design review? You want to talk a little bit?
Okay, sure. Do you want to go first? Go ahead. Oh, okay. We'll just, okay. Mine is probably more general, and Laura's is probably more specific to building design. So maybe it makes sense for me to just go. The property has to be on sewer. That's one of the things that, well, first of all, I wanted to say, the proposal has been reviewed. I think it just went through its fourth review with the Design Review Committee. The plans were also distributed to department heads to get their input. And it's one of the sites in town that we've been carrying on a list of potential development for maybe, I'd say, at least a year, probably more like two years. So when we've had some discussions, you know, we've been aware that it's a site, that, you know, something is going to be coming forward. And I think throughout that process, there's been some refinement of what the requirements are. One of those was that the proposal does have to be on sewer. It's located in the Water Resource Protection District. So there is a higher standard than in other locations for drainage as far as suspended solid removal. You know, most likely, there will be, you know, the subsurface infiltration. But there, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some way to address some of those concerns. The bylaw is really intended for mixed-use buildings. And this proposal is a little bit out of the, I think, out of the vision of the bylaw in some ways, because of the buildings that are being proposed, there's only one that's really truly a mixed-use building. So, you know, that may be something that the board wants to address in some way. There is a zoning issue that, you know, we're not going to talk about. But all I want to say is that I think it makes sense to wait on your actual application until that zoning is resolved. Okay. I am really glad to see that the architecture, I think, has moved through some evolution to where it is now. There is a standard in the zoning bylaw for the roof pitch. And the reason for that isn't so much, you know, any particular building, like the older building that you have on the site. It's more just to maintain some kind of a traditional feel instead of like a flat roof or some of the kind of modernistic pitch roofs that you see around on, you know, some of the more standard buildings. So they are looking for eight to 12 slope, except for 20% of the roof can be different from that. But I think, I'm not sure that everything that you've got, you know, really meets that. There are a few places, I mean, particularly with the building out front that looks like a little bit more like a sort of standardized architecture. I'm, you know, not sure it's all, it all meets it. But, you know, I'm just putting that out there for something that, you know, would be good to see what all those slopes actually are on the roof. But I'm not, you know, asking for anything right now. I'm just putting that out for the board. You know, if they think that's, you know, that's important to follow up on that. As far as the density, the base density that's allowed on the site, without any kind of public benefit or any kind of a bonus, is 24 residential units. And the board can increase that all the way up to 30, which is what's shown here. But there should be a really meaningful public benefit that's provided. It's not like a right that, you know, that an applicant has to come in and just automatically get that. There really has to be some discussion with the board and some decision-making by the board. This is a really good public benefit that the town really, really wants to have. And it's worthwhile in terms of, you know, that increase in the density. The infrastructure improvements that were talked about, I mean, the looping of the water is good. But, you know, the water division really does require looping with almost all the proposals now. So, you know, I don't know if you really want to count that. But I'll leave the rest of that, you know, that whole discussion up to the board. And I was very glad to hear about the traffic engineer coming on board. I think we talked a little bit about, you know, some of the traffic issues. There is an easement. I did talk with the owners of the property under that easement this week. And, you know, I think everybody is on board with that. But the two properties, the Morning Glories property and this property, there's really kind of a synergy between the two properties. I mean, you're going to have the shared entrance. Both of the businesses are pretty close to the street. There's not a lot of parking up there on either side. And I think you really need to get into some really in-depth discussions with each other about how is the situation really all going to work out. And it might be helpful for the planning board. I know it's not, you know, exactly typical, but where you do have all this connection to maybe show the pavement on the Morning Glories plan, on your plans, so that the board and everyone can see, where is that pavement? How is this access going to change? You know, where's the, how does the drive-through interact with, you know, with the rest of this traffic system? And, you know, really get a picture of the whole thing. So those are just a couple thoughts I had.
Good one. Thank you, Laura. Laura?
Laura Delon, Design Review Committee. We've had a couple times with Congress. And the latest design they presented was fast improvement over earlier designs. Definitely fits better with the transit to it. As far as going forward, just to develop a few more details as far as we talked about respect to what's on Stockbridge Road, kind of see how it's.
That?
Oh, is that the?
Yeah.
Okay. And I see you added the.
I did, yeah.
Can't see this far away, but as far as details from the existing, that residential component, we kind of talked briefly on how try to miniaturize the new buildings.
Yeah.
As a matter of.
Oh, we haven't, yeah, we don't have details yet.
Okay. I guess what the next step went for, I mean, you know, like light fixtures, more colored selection, that type of things, you know?
It was my impression that when, at that meeting, basically, you chucked off some large blocks in terms of direction that, from your design review, from the collective design review standpoint, it needed to be addressed. And I think by and large, that they've looked to address those, if not all of those. I think we're there. There's a memo that's a matter of record, I think, of that meeting, the minutes of that meeting on it. Let me ask if there are, you know, some questions or comments from the board, and then we'll open it up to the public. Chris?
I'm just wondering if I could make a couple of comments relative to the points that Laura made?
Sure.
In terms of the benefit, because we're seeking 30, you know, as opposed to 24 units, the benefits that we are providing, one is the connection. It's 120 feet of connection all the way to Brew Street, our property, of a lit paved pathway. And I think this will be a true public benefit to allow, right now, that walkway isn't used very adequately. I actually own the property where the Green Bush Post Office is and the house beside that. And I'm aware that there's very little traffic down there. And to make that connection complete, you know, to what will hopefully will be a vibrant area, as Greg said, people can, I've been meaning to make the walk myself from there to the train station. But it's a much nicer walk than going up over Stockbridge Street, which is quite an exertion. I think it'd be the same amount of time. And for bicyclists and everybody else to use that path. And right now, it's not being used. The other public benefit that I alluded to already, and that is retaining the existing building. There's an economic sacrifice in doing that. The last two applicants who came before you with this project in mind, were going to put up quite a large, you know, mixed-use building with six residential units up top and all intense retail development below. And so we've tried to look at this issue and balance it out. And the reason the retail unit is relatively modest in the front is that we don't want to block the existing building. And we do have the potential of converting a portion of the existing building back to retail, as it once was, at the time I acquired it. It had insurance agency and a flower shop. And we might like to go back to creating more retail and office space in that building as well. And the other point on density, we have 30 units. But keep in mind, there are two of them are studio apartments and 17 are one-bedroom units. And so it isn't that much density in terms of people per se. Because we could come in 24 three-bedroom units and not require any public benefit, but give you much more density into the place.
It could better, yeah. Higher and lower area ratio.
Yeah. So the density shouldn't be just, I think, units alone, but how many people and vehicles we're bringing into the environment. And the other thing I want to point out, I think it's a public benefit that we opted to go with rental units as opposed to condominiums. This will help you meet your requirements and everything else. All of the units will count towards your 10%. And it's a bit of an economic sacrifice now, but we think it's a wise economic decision. It might not quite perhaps economic pay up. In the long term, we think it's a good decision for us. But we also think it's a good decision for the town. I just want to point.
Yeah. But I think where we really don't have the application in front of us, I think, we really aren't going to make a decision, is the benefits yes, benefits no, benefits right, benefits wrong on it. Let me do this, because we've got, at 8 o'clock, we've got a public hearing that we have to have. Let me, if the board will indulge me, what I'll do is ask for comments. I'm particularly interested in the comments of the neighbors in terms of what this proposal is on it. So I would ask if, Morning Glories? Would you like to address what your concerns are, your views are?
We have a few questions, and Kathy's going to.
We've been discussing this. Kathy O'Leary, I've worked here for 20 years, a few or more years. We have a few problems. First of all, we were, we still haven't been informed of this meeting. We found out from good-intending people who let us know about it. So we're a little concerned that he's been out of the loop in all this. And he is an integral part of this. Frankly, I think this entire setup here is going to choke the bakery. I don't see it as some synergy or anything like that. I see it as us being choked out for many reasons. Parking being one. We were told that we could share the parking, but as a previous renter at other places, when I rented units myself in other places, I, you also get a dedicated parking space, generally, when you rent an apartment. So I don't know how Mr. Ford can offer us a parking space that's also being offered to a tenant. So I don't see that as an option. The bakery's suffered actually quite a bit over the course of the few years because of a lot of things. One being the MBTA. You know, benefited the town, which is great, but they didn't see the damage it did to the bakery. Because we lost a lot of business because of construction. Another was the sewage line on Country Way. We lost a lot of business because of construction. And this isn't going to be done overnight. And I see it as honestly a potential nightmare for the bakery for any kind of continual flow from my boss and for the business. And that concerns me a lot, because, you know, we put a lot of work and a lot of energy into that, to be going along and try to make some gains and have it stop like that. I think it's a little bit self-serving. One of the concerns I have, which Laura addressed, was we're now going to have to have a lot of our customers park out back with us, because we have the long parking spaces. So the employees would park at the front end, and the customers would park at the rear end. We spoke to, I think it was Deputy Chief Burby at the fire station about the egress of that space between the existing apartments and the bakery building. And he said, "There is enough space there for two vehicles to go side by side, because we cannot have our drive-through compromised." It may sound like a small thing to you, but it's an essential part of this business. My concern is if you have an elderly person, a family, who's parking out back and they're coming alongside the bakery, and you've got two flows of traffic, because that's going to be a lot of traffic. You know, if you have mixed use and you have apartments and everybody's working different shifts and these businesses are open, how do we safely get our customers to go from the back parking lot to the front? And because of that, we have some very, very loyal customers, but they will find other sources of businesses to go to instead of ours if they think it's, one, the efficiency is down, the safety is down, the parking is compromised. And these are very, very essential issues for the health and well-being of this bakery. And we have a lot of concerns.
Very good. Anything else?
No, just for me.
Introduce yourself and.
My name is Todd Williams. I live at 45 Country Way, directly opposite the driveway to Morning Glories. Last Sunday, Morning Glories had over 300 customers between 6:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And that's a lot of traffic. I don't care what the floor is built, but I'd like to see a traffic study, a parking analysis, a pattern when people are leaving in the morning and coming home. And I also had a problem with the density of 30 units, but that's been addressed to 24. And I think this will put Morning Glories out of business. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Chuck Fagan on 60 Country Way, and the press, Stockbridge Road. I think they've addressed some concerns, but I think my concern is phase one, where the building out front, the parking backing up into the drive to a, you know, I think that has to be addressed. And I'm sure they'll address it, but that's the critical turning point in this project, because it is phase one. And if that doesn't work, phase two and three, you're going to have real problems. And if that doesn't work, phase two and three, we're going to have real problems, I feel.
Let me, at this point, let me ask this question. The, it's, it's eight o'clock, and we have a public hearing scheduled for the accessory dwelling for eight claymore terraces. Would the applicant be willing to give us like ten or fifteen minutes? Okay? We appreciate that. So, we've extended our timeframe, but that doesn't mean we need to fill it all out. Anybody else in the butters? Chris?
I want to speak, I want to make sure of you, Jim. I do want, I think, raise some very important questions to the Morning Glory people, and I, I want to apologize if I did not communicate adequately. We've had some conversations at different times. I just returned from Florida, where I spent the winter, and, and I made a non-successful attempt, and I actually thought notices went out to about us about being following meetings. I didn't, so I was unaware that they would, all of us weren't necessarily following you by letter. At any rate, having said that, we want to be good neighbors to Morning Glory. We've, we've talked about this quite a bit, and we are going to have an open parking environment. There will be no assigned parking. People, and many of our residents will be gone all day long. They made many, my present residents in the, in the building there, most of their spaces are empty. And, and in fact, we've been very gracious, I think, allowing, you know, your customers to park there. I know I've never really questioned it, maybe attended it, but we, I think there'll be a lot of synergy in this, and there are fifty-seven new spaces people can buy. Again, my engineer Greg has talked about some driveway potential on your side, and he'd be glad to sit down and meet with you and discuss some of these things. We're concerned too about people utilizing the drive-through exit, and we're going to try and come up with ways to make that clearly discouraged, and Greg has some ideas on that, and he would be glad to be with you and share his ideas, and would be willing to bear the expense, the improvements which we feel might facilitate, you know, that sort of discouraging people from driving in that direction. So, and I also think having twenty-four new residents ultimately will be very good for business. I know Charlie Reynolds said to me, "I can't wait to have all these new customers coming over to my store," and you'll have them too. And even during the construction period, I, I think most construction people like donuts and coffee, from my experience. I think there'll be a lot of business, you know, coming from that environment. And we are going to stage, this isn't all going to happen at once. The construction of the building up front will be rather, in the size of very small cottage homes, it's only seventeen hundred square feet, it's a shell, and the tenant will finish it out. But we don't see that as being that disruptive, and we'll make every effort, we're going to be moving the, the parking behind the building, we'll do that first before we start construction up first. So, this is going to give some more parking opportunities. So, I, I really think we can, this can be mutually beneficial by the time-
Yeah, let me, let me kind of just stop it there, because we're really getting more into the merits of this particular proposal.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is to come back up and make sure that no more public comment, and at that point, give you the feedback from the board, so that you'll have that. Okay, so, the question, any other public comment?
Can I just say one thing, sir?
Sure.
My name is Elsie Abora, I'm the owner of Morning Glory's. I just think it's no guarantee when the parking space is there, then the people are going to leave those buildings, they're not going to leave their car over there, you can get the train. When we have the construction of the train station, they said that we're going to have a huge business coming to the bakery. Guess what? I owe half an hour early, I don't get one cup of coffee because of the train. So, besides other construction, we lost so much business, and after the train is running, we get no business at all. It's no guarantee that when the parking space is there, people are going to take the train to work, they're going to leave their car over there. It's so close, so convenient, the gas is way too expensive, that it's very convenient for them to do it. So, who's going to guarantee that the parking space is not going to be full of cars, what with all the people for the business going over there to do, you know, whatever they have to do, and that new construction as a business, and the people living over there, who's going to going to guarantee then my business not going to be having a lot of problems, and they can even lose my business because of this huge construction around my, you know, it's a little business, you know? It's, it's a great place, but it is, if you compare the size of my building to this big construction around, nobody can guarantee that the parking space is going to be available for us. If he rent apartment, how are you going to tell them you have to leave with the car at daytime, because Morning Glory's need a parking space? Nobody would ever have the place from you, so that's all. Thank you.
Good other point, thank you. Anything else? Questions for the board? Comments from the board? Richard?
Well, quickly, just to, you know, I, I empathize with the comments that have been made. I actually, I think Kathy probably knows, I go to Morning Glory's almost every day. And, you know, from my personal experience, there's never really been, at least up to this point, a difficulty finding a parking space. And as I speak for myself, not the all-citizens of Situate, but I value the food and the offerings, and whether it's congested or not, I would still go there. So, I don't think you'd lose business, at least from my perspective. But that's neither here nor there. I just wanted to make that comment, that I think that the value that you offer, and there's not that many opportu, or there's not that many availability around the Green Bush area, so it's, it's unique, and, you know, I certainly want to do everything we can to support your business and keep it financially viable. So-
Make one little comment on that. And I do appreciate your saying that, and I do understand what you're saying, but history has shown, because of the sewer, the Country Way project and the T project, we did lose business. We lost a lot of business. And they did come back afterwards, but especially in this economy, can we, can this business endure a low time during phase one, phase two, phase three? Because it will make a difference, and this business is not going to survive on the construction workers that are coming in for our product. It survives off of the community and the surrounding communities who have not historically come back during, they didn't want to come down the street, they didn't want, and understandably, they went elsewhere. They came back, but that dry time really hit the bakery very hard.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, very valid concerns.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, I, and I, so I wanted to shift, just to make that comment, that I'm very supportive of the business. But the second thing, I guess, with the, the informal discussion at hand here, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. That I read through the design review, I think I agree with everything they said. I like the fact that you did the balconies, I was going to comment on that. I actually like the retail component out front in the sense of architecturally designed. I like the depot kind of architecture, which was mentioned in the design review. I really want to commend you on that. I think it actually looks quite nice. My first comments, or I just, I was a little bit concerned about the parking between the existing structure and the new proposed mixed use, just for the fact of it's sort of a dead end, and let's just say potentially all those spaces are full, and then you pull in there and you realize everything's full. That would be difficult to back out unless there is one that, there's a turning radius or something. That was just the first thing that sort of struck me, was that I've been in those situations. I mean, how many of us have been in a parking garage where, like, at the mall at Christmas, and you go all the way up this ramp, and like, everything's full, and then there's no turnaround space? It's kind of a nightmare. And I guess the same thing almost, you know, down to the right where it connects to the Green Bush Trail. I'm not so worried about that, because that's more of resident parking, but with the one in the middle being more commercially, I could see how if those are, I assume intended, or they're intended for more like, you know, realtor, not, not so much retail, but maybe more business-type on the first floor, is what, like lawyer, you know, something like that. Because that also kind of, I thought, hmm, that's kind of strange how it's sort of back behind the existing residential. But at the same time, if they were uses such as, like I said, a lawyer's office, or, you know, some kind of commercial business like that where it didn't necessarily need the street frontage, then I think that would be okay. And I, I wanted to commend you on preserving the, the structure, I think that's really good. And then also, just to comment that, from all of the previous proposals that I've seen, this has certainly, as Laura said, and as Laura said, Laura and Laura, that the evolution has been quite dramatic, and I, I really do appreciate all the effort that you've gone, and I think, you know, again, there's a lot of issues to be resolved, but in my, my initial pass was that it was pretty positive, so.
Robert?
I would agree with everything Richard said. I have a couple of just kind of bullets. I know we're, we're in a hurry, and I know we'll get to talk with you folks again more than once, and hopefully talk with the butters as well. It seems to me if you were starting with a completely clean slate on this project, and it were a planning slash architectural design charrette or school project, whatever, you might think about putting the commercial space in the existing building, as you said, Mr. Ford, that it had formerly been, to try and get that closer to the streetscape, to get it closer together, so that commercial traffic didn't have to penetrate the residential part of the neighborhood, so that the parking for that commercial space could be kind of solidified in, in one zone of the site. Maybe even develop the courtyard that kind of appears as green between those two buildings as a, as a pedestrian focus, so people could go back and forth between the two buildings. I absolutely concur and sympathize with the point of view of Morning Glory's. I hope and, and almost would request and require that we see a site plan that includes Morning Glory's parking and circulation as part of it. It doesn't have to be detailed, but I really want to see how that's going to work. I also would like to know how many spaces Morning Glory's has now, how many it will have after this development is complete of its own, not shared, and how many it would require by zoning. I think those are all important things to consider. I'm with Laura in that to densify this to the maximum that's allowed, we're going to have to look hard at what the substantial public benefit is that's going to be provided to the town. I can't quite correlate what's been talked about so far with that definition. I frankly think we're going to need more. And also, lastly, the landscaping and plant materials used here are going to be critical to the kind of overall ambience and how this feels to the, as, as a part of the town's fabric. So, and I think we'd see it anyway, but we're going to need a pretty detailed explanation and illustration of the landscaping. So, that's it. I mean, basically, Richard's right, it's a huge improvement over anything else we've seen on this site. It's an exciting development, it's definitely going to benefit the Green Bush Village and the town, it's just got to be done, done right. I mean, we're going to put a lot of effort into it, you're going to put a lot of time and energy and money into it, Mr. Ford, and we want to do it as, absolutely as right as it can possibly be done.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you. I echo all the things that have been said up to, up to this point, and I have a couple of, a couple of questions, and first a comment. First, at the Mercer household, we are great fans of the orange cranberry muffins, and regularly come in and get those. My, my daughter attends college out of, out of state and misses them. Second, you know, I'm, I'm a real fan of, of affordable rental housing for, for younger families, and I, and I'm pleased to see that you have one-bedrooms and studio apartments and so forth, but there seems to be a gap, at least in my experience, between that young family that goes from one child to two children, and, and there's no, no availability for three-bedroom apartments anywhere around. I'm just curious as to, did you consider that at all, or, because that seems to me that that would be an available benefit that might, for the town, if there were affordable three-bedroom units that a, a younger family could have.
I'll ask the architect, what are you thinking?
Well, we did market study, of course, and the rents are much better for one-bedrooms per square foot.
It was strictly an economic argument, then?
Yeah.
Oftentimes, that's, that's where you run into the public benefit, is it runs counter to the economic arguments.
See, the other thing I'd add, though, is that-
Always, there are a lot of, there's a real rise in single-person households, and we're responding to that. It seems that there are plenty of three-bedroom homes in town, and three-bedroom, not in such apartments, but they can be rented out. Really hard to find one-bedroom apartments, so we think we're, we're filling a need, and just to focus on that and not provide the full spectrum, it's not a bad thing, I think.
Well, we'll have to look at that more, more in detail at the appropriate time. Thank you.
This brings it to me. Probably four, four or five items, I think. One is I'm really concerned about the access. I think I've, I've got, I've got a con, I've, I've got an issue, and let me, let me, let me pick on Charlie Reynolds' place for a minute. Backing out into the road is, is actually not a very safe thing, the way that that's set up. They're backing out, they're turning to the left, they're turning to the right. What I've now done is I'm backing out, I've got two points of conflict. I've got a point of conflict of the traffic coming from Morning Glory's, and I've also got the traffic on, on the roadway, on Country Way, and that, that concerns me. That's why I suggested I'd really like to see a pretty strong traffic analysis. I'd like to see it come back up and include the entire site, so that the traffic, so I'm seeing what the impact is on Morning Glory's current configuration is, because I really, my feeling is, is very strong about it, I don't think they need to change anything, nor should they be negatively impacted. So, I think what you've got to do is to integrate into what, what they've got without having an adverse impact. Now, if you can mutually agree to something that's to everybody's benefit, then so be it. But that, that's really a concern. I'm concerned about the site, the traffic on the site, once I get beyond. I think Bob makes an excellent point, in the fact that if, if I come back up, even though I'm looking to combine commercial and residence, right, I'm looking to do that on this site, it may be that I, that I put a, a larger emphasis on the commercial on the front end of it than on the back end of it. That way there, I don't have people coming back up trying to get a parking space. Richard in his Christmas shopping, for example. And I don't want to see him be a lemming going off the, off the ramp. I, I'm really concerned, and I haven't had a chance to really look at in detail, and that's the size and the scope. And when I'm coming down, and I'm coming down Stockbridge, and I'm coming down to the corner, right, I'm looking at it, at a height that's, it's higher than, let me pick on Chick's barn. God knows I love that barn. But it ends up that you're going to be almost eight feet taller than what, what his barn is, right? And I think that that's, you're going to see that, and you're going to focus on that roof coming down. So, I think you, you get, you get a negative response to it, a negative impact when you, when you see that coming down, so I'd like to see that. Benefit to the town, I don't want to be beat on this anymore, but I think that's, that's really the key to come back up and get additional units, in my mind, and that is, let's come back and be really positive on it, okay? I mean, the fact that it, it may be more cost-effective for you for one way, or it may cost you money to do something, I guess in my own mind, I don't see as a benefit to the town. And then, I think Laura made the point in the mixed use, I'd like, the intent of the, the overlay district was to come back up and combine commercial with the residence. What I've done is I've got to put a pocket here, some residence, a pocket here, and then I come back up, and I've got one, it's, it's really of all residence. And I think it needs to be integrated on it, so I think you need, need to do that. The last point that I had make, and I want to make is straightforward. What, what I would suggest is you come back up and you get a fair-sized room, you sit there and you get a pot of coffee, and you sit down, and you bring all your neighbors in, and you sit there and you talk this thing through, so that everybody understands exactly what you're looking to do, what their concerns are, so you, you have a sense of, of that. Because that way there, you can resolve that before it ever comes back up, when it comes in with the application, so that you come back up with a synergy rather than, than an argument, okay, on it. And I think, you know, there's a couple of builders in town that use that approach, and it works very well for them, and I think, I mean, where you've got a much larger project, and I think it would work very well for you. The, now, I guess that was my next, my last. The last, last point is, I'm not sure what the impact is of the changes that they're proposing for the forty B on Stockbridge Road, but they're looking to put that into apartments, and I don't know whether you've filtered or filtered that into your equations on it. But that may also be a concern, because they're, they're coming back up and putting more rental apartments in as opposed to what they originally had proposed. They may be aware of that. I think the meeting is twenty-
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Twentieth or the twenty-first.
Twentieth.
For, for the ZBAs, they may want to be aware of that. So, having said all that, I think, oh, I want to address one other point, and that was, I think they made a comment about public notice. Right. Typically, what we do is that once, if we had a hearing, we would come back out and we would provide the public notice to it, and it's a hearing, because it's, it comes at a cost on it. What we can do- Be careful here, because I'm volunteering you guys. What I'm going to suggest is if you, undoubtedly, I, I'm not, I don't know if we'll have any more informal hearings before we have the actual presentation, but if we do, if you leave your email address with, with, with the planning board office, I will see that you- with the planning board office, I will see that you get a notification of the next public hearing. I think that's about as fair as we can be in terms of on that. But the comment that's made is about not getting a notice. Ordinarily, you wouldn't get a notice on something that's public, not an application, but just a public discussion. So, I think you've now heard from the abutters, you've heard from the board, you've heard from design review, you've heard from the planner, probably more than you wanted, so I guess it's your opportunity to wrap it up, and we'll hear from you.
Can I...
Oh, wait a minute. Bob?
I'm sorry, can I make one more comment, Bill?
Sure.
This is actually addressed to the folks from Morning Glories. You need to remember that something will be built here at some time, you know, and construction, whether the impact is negative or positive on your business, is going to happen to some degree. That's really all I want to say. Nothing ever stays the same forever. So, you know, we need to make sure it's the right kind of development, and it's going to benefit everyone involved.
Right. And just to echo that, I just wanted to say that I'm sure there's a compromise or a solution or synergy, as you said, in working together, because I truly believe that this can work for everyone, and kind of like the rising tide floats all boats. I truly believe that. So, I think it can be beneficial for Morning Glories and beneficial for Mr. Ford as well.
Well, we will take your suggestion, Bill, of getting a pot of coffee, and we will not buy it at the competition side of Morning Glory's.
That's a good step.
And sit down and talk, and we'll do that soon. Greg, he would like to have that conversation. And I appreciate your comment to Mr. Vogel about, you know, there will be something happening there and whether it's us, and we'd like to make it as, we've been neighbors for 20 years, and I think we've gotten along well. You're not having a stranger come in, you're having a neighbor come in.
Right.
And work with you, and hopefully we like each other. So, and you took off a number of issues, and some were attempted, we want to argue about, but there'll be some dialogue, you know, on certain campus. If we responded to every single issue that has been brought up just across the board now, we'd be arguing with each other. And so, but we're going to pay attention to all of these, as we have with design review, and I think we can get, you know, we're very pleased that, you know, that sort of appreciated the evolution process here, and I think we can now address the issues you've brought up, and hopefully reach something that we can all be, can work with. So, it'll be probably in a couple more months, we'll be ready to come in with a full site plan, but in the meantime, we'll digest all of these ideas.
In all likelihood, probably the earliest that we'll be able to address the zoning would be to the annual town meeting. So, if they have a special, we probably have a special town meeting in the fall.
It's possible we'll have a special, I think, because of the national election, they're not sure, you know, how that's going to affect it.
That would be the year.
All right, so we probably won't see each other in the fall, and it gives us plenty of time to digest and address the issues you've raised, and maybe have some informal talks with yourself and Laura in the meantime.
Okay.
That's what we'll do before.
Great.
Did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, Steve Yorkman, I just wanted to comment, in the last couple subdivisions that we did, we actually collected all of the abutters and neighbors, people who weren't abutters but concerned people. We collected all their emails, and we were actually able to send out one blast email to everybody as we were going through the project, and they could respond right to your email, Chris, which worked out fantastic. So, anybody that does want to give you an email, I would suggest you use it, because it's really simple.
I'm watching Richard with his iPad up there. I was going to suggest that these renderings look wonderful on an iPad. You can zoom in and move your fingers, and they jump out. And if anybody is interested in seeing, we'd be glad to email you all of these floor plans and renderings, and so you can take a hard look at them, and we'd be more than happy to do that. So, I don't know if the sign-up sheet is still around, but if anybody could add emails, add an email to it, we'd be glad to email you these, as well as all the members of the board. Would you like this?
I would very much like that, yes.
Okay, good, we'll do that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Everyone.
Next item on the list, the ever-paved Joan Wilson. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that.
I saw you painting this afternoon.
I know. I have success, because I changed the name, and it was...
I know. I heard all about it, yeah.
Do you possibly like more to use those as maybe the hallway or something like that?
Yeah.
Why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us what you're looking to do.
Joan Wilson, Eight Claymore Terrace, and I'm looking to convert the garage in the back of my dad into a single dwelling.
So, the accessory dwelling?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah, a couple of things. The accessory dwelling is a small structure. The total square footage looks like it's going to be less than 600 square feet, based on scaling that garage or carriage house. So, it's below the 750 square feet, so there's no issue with the area of it. Joan has signed an affidavit stating that she will live in one of the two units on the site, presumably the single-family house. The parking is a little bit different in that there's a fence across the gravel portion of the driveway. The plan is to park in the front part on the paved driveway. I think maybe the board wants to just mention that in the conditions, that if there's some kind of issue, that the parking can be opened up and, you know, some kind of gate put in the fence or something, so that it's, you know, just as an option in case some future owner wants to have that more as a separate unit.
There's a fence here, you say?
Yeah, there's like a fence right across there.
Okay.
Where the 22.5 line is, is that where it is?
Where the 70.2, and then where the arrowhead is, that line going across to the right.
Okay.
It's like a little picket fence, but it just goes across. It's cute. Yeah. Oh, it's for dogs.
That's what it's for?
No issue with emergency vehicle access in that case?
Well, you know, that's a good point. I hadn't explored that at all.
I suppose a fire truck can take out a picket fence any time it wants to, right?
I think the issue's the same whether it's a garage or whether it's an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, okay.
Because the accessory building, accessory dwelling is in a separate building, the building has to meet setbacks for a single-family house in this district, which it does. And one final subject I want to bring up is that a number of people, of course, everyone within 300 feet of the property is notified, because this is a formal special permit that's being requested. And several people came into the office with questions about the sewer connection, and was the accessory unit going to be connected onto sewer, and, you know, that kind of question. And it turns out that this property had an emergency connection sometime, you know, in the not-too-distant past, I'm assuming. They're not on the formal map of properties that have been sewered. If anyone wants to see that map, we do have it. But this had to be an emergency connection, because the system was in failure. And I'm not sure if there are other properties up here that had the same situation and are also, had to make an emergency connection. But Mrs. Wilson did talk to the DPW. They told her that she could connect. It's really an issue that the planning board doesn't have a lot to do with, as far as okaying it or not okaying it, or saying what the requirements are. If there are any issues with the emergency connection, the size of it, or whatever, I think there just has to be a condition, which I believe we've included in the draft, that says that the sewer connection has to meet all requirements of the DPW. But just because this unit is getting connected on doesn't mean that it's taking anything away from anybody else, or that it's, you know, I mean, sewer is a really sensitive issue in Situate. So, you know, I don't know how people, you know, how people are going to respond to this, you know, going on sewer, but it really has to do with the DPW and their authority. So, that's all I had to say.
Questions to the board, and then we'll have questions in the public. Richard?
I don't really have any questions. I mean, I think that Laura's gone over everything pretty well.
Okay. Bob?
No, my only comment on the sewer situation is it's no different than if you were going to add a master suite to the main house. And, you know, I can't imagine anybody would complain about that.
In the simplest form of relocating someone from one bedroom out of one building and putting him in another bedroom, any other...
Yeah, right.
That's a good point.
Eric?
Nothing.
Questions in the public? Then by yourself and...
Yeah, I'm Bill Solomon, the owner of the property, 11 Claymore Terrace, across the street from Pike.
Where are you in terms, what, are you where...
Direct across the street.
Were Tommy Whelan's house used to be?
No, Solomon's, next to the Whelan, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, the sewer is near and dear to my dad. The sewer connection actually is three single-spaghetti lines, both my house, the house just uphill from me towards Beaver Dam, and Joan's house. They go to a common connection up on Beaver Dam, and then the common connection goes into the town sewer at Decadeville Avenue. My concern is, you know, there's three pumps, there's three environmental ones, the pumps that suited up at that point. The line and everything, everything was engineered for those three pumps. If any additional capacity or additional pump gets put on, it has to be re-engineered, or another connection has to be made. I've talked to the someone at Beaver Dam and the DPW about that. I mean, that's my major concern. I mean, if we can connect it to the existing pump, and that can handle it, you know, the capacity is there, it shouldn't be a problem. But if anything has to change, then it raises an issue of, you know, the size of that common connection that you want to have. And a couple other questions I just had. You mentioned an affidavit, sorry, people saw you call it, what was the affidavit?
One of the requirements of the bylaw is that the owner has to live on the property. They can't rent out both of the units. And to make sure that happens, the bylaw requires that the planning board get an affidavit from the owner saying that they're going to live on the property. They can't rent both the units. They could rent one of the units, but they have to live on the property.
And is it transferable if the house is sold? Is that...
Yeah, it's transferable.
You know, again, it's, you know, my major issue with the sewer, I mean, it's a quiet cul-de-sac, it's been there 50 years. I'm just, I'm not sure why we need to increase the housing density on it after all this time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bernie Westerfeld, 12 Harborview Road, which is right behind the property.
He's married, too.
Our doors mark and your dogs.
Okay.
You're in Harbor Heights?
Harborview.
Harborview, okay.
I want to join Mrs. Sullivan in his concerns about the sewer. And I'm also wondering, what happens if the property is divided into two separate properties? Does it become a separate house? How does that work?
Can't be.
You can't?
Can't. It's one property with the main house and accessory dwelling on it.
Yeah, I mean, it was primarily created, like, if you had your mother, that you wanted to come live with you, or, you know, typically someone that was a fam, could be a family member or an accessory dwelling.
And I haven't seen the plans. I haven't been able to come to town hall. Is the footprint about the same as what's there now?
It's exactly the same.
It is what's there now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The outbuilding becomes, it's currently a garage, I guess, what it's intended was a garage, and that would become the accessory dwelling.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments from the board? We have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Well, let's just clarify one thing. The DPW is going to weigh in on the sewer situation, and they have to approve whatever they need, obviously, to make it work, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it might make sense to send them an email or memo, kind of, you know, summarizing what we heard here, which is that there's an issue with pumps and, you know, individual spaghetti, if you want to call them spaghetti lines, going out to Beaver Dam Road, and that, you know, there may be some issues there they need to, you know, take into account with adding on this extra unit. But, you know, I don't feel...
So, as a planning issue, it doesn't really impact us, but as a building department issue, it might. Neil might not be able to give a permit for this if the sewer connection were proper and approved.
Yeah, yeah.
That's basically where the buck would stop, if there were a problem.
Yeah, particularly where there's some kind of special setup with these pumps.
Yeah.
You want to make sure the pump can pump all of this.
I just want to make sure what we sign off on isn't potentially a situation that's not viable. Somebody else is going to look and decide whether it's viable.
Because it's not really our jurisdiction for the sewer.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Which I understand.
But I think the situation that's being described is a little unusual, that, you know, you've got pumps, you've got, you know, these small lines connecting in.
Yeah, right, right.
Maybe somebody should be alerted to that, so we can send a memo to Bob Rowland, who's the sewer supervisor.
Okay.
And just make sure that he's aware of it and copy out on it, so they both know about it.
Okay, so that'll be part of the...
But we'd make a condition...
Condition.
That clarifies the fact that they would be the ones that would have to provide the water in the sewer connection, make sure that they're adequate.
Yep. I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
So, does that have, this doesn't have that clause, though?
So, you can, okay, I'll add it.
I have a few words.
I move to make the following findings a fact concerning the accessory dwelling at Eight Claymore Terrace. On May 11, 2012, the applicant owner of the property applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling. Number two, the plans submitted with the application are entitled Floor Plans of Carriage House for Wilson, Eight Claymore Terrace, dated 5/11/12, and Existing Conditions Plan Showing House Location Prepared by Morse Engineering Incorporated, dated 4/9/12. Number three, the property is located in the residential R3 zoning district. The side setback is 11.4 feet, and the rear setback is 20.9 feet. The carriage house complies with all setback, building height, and yard requirements for a single-family house in that district. Number four, the plan shows a proposed accessory dwelling of no greater floor area than 600 square feet. Number five, a site planned by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated shows an existing paved driveway. There is also a gravel driveway separated by a picket fence from the paved driveway, which could easily, be easily connected to it. This would provide ample parking for both dwelling units. Number six, the applicant has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will live at Eight Claymore Terrace. Number seven, the applicant, the application meets the standards of Situate zoning bylaw section 530 for an accessory dwelling special permit. I move to approve the accessory dwelling special permit for Eight Claymore Terrace with the following conditions.
Let's vote...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, a new motion to approve the findings of fact.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those are favors?
Aye. I'm sorry.
I'll be sorry.
New to this. I move to approve the accessory dwelling special permit for Eight Claymore Terrace with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the building department, Board of Health, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Water Department, and other town agencies. Number two, the property at Eight Claymore Terrace shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the existing dwelling and the accessory dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and/or square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Number three, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Number four, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, all construction shall conform to the plans entitled Floor Plans of Carriage House and House for Wilson, Eight Claymore Terrace, dated 5/11/12, and Existing Conditions Plan Showing House Location Prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated, dated 4/9/12. Number five, connection to sewer shall be DPW regulations. Do you want to add to that?
And the...
And final approval is required by the DPW for review of existing pump situation?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, there's a clause in there already that talks about approval by DPW, Board of Health, blah, blah, blah. So, I think we're covered.
Yeah, I think you've probably covered already.
Okay. Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted. If additional parking is required, the applicant shall provide a connection between the existing paved and gravel parking areas. Number seven, this special permit shall be voided if it is not recorded at the Registry of Deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with a town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of the recording to the planning board. And number eight, final, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9.
Is the unit going to be numbered like 8A?
No, Jen's bill just moved it up.
It has to have the number.
Oh, just, no, it won't even have a number. She won't be, you know, it's-
I think the Fire Department still requires it.
Oh, right, well, if it's required, I'll have it as 8A.
Okay. So I have a motion, do I have comments, questions? Second?
I will motion that we accept the application as presented and approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So tomorrow, do I go talk to Neil? What do I do, do I talk to Neil?
Not yet, because we have to write the decision, which we'll probably do.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow or Monday.
And file, what, 20 days?
And file it, and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Back to work.
When you're finished, come over to my house.
Now we can either adjourn or reduce surety for Tilden Estates. What's the question?
Did Steve leave?
Next item on the agenda is to reduce surety for Tilden Estates. And then we'll get to the class. Tell us what you're looking to do, Steve.
Pretty simple, we're just looking to reduce surety. More of the work has been done out there, and it's been inspected. Laura came out, and Pat Brennan, your consultant, and they recommended a number that it can reduce to, and that's what we're looking for.
So the reduction would be from $162,000 to $1,2,388?
Yeah, we have a motion, so let's just-
Do you want any discussion or anything?
No.
Nope, okay. I move to approve a reduction in the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of the Tilden Estates subdivision from $162,000 to $1,2,338, as the underground electric telephone cable TV conduits have been installed. The BMP swale along the rear lots 12 through 15 have been constructed and is in use, and the trash racks have been installed on the head walls.
The reduction is consistent with the consulting engineer's recommendation.
Yep, do you want to add that? Yep.
Discussion? Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, I think I got a flat tire because of you, but I'm just, I drove through Tilden Estates and like the next-
You found a nail?
The next day I had a nail in my, yeah, I had a nail in my tire.
The question is, did you return it?
And I'm thinking, where was I where there could have been a nail? And the only place I could think of was Tilden Estates, so.
Well, that's because you didn't buy a lot when you were in there.
That's probably why.
They sell them fast, because the subdivision is unbelievable.
That's good.
It's one of the fastest one-pie that's ever sold.
It's very nice to hear in this emerging economy.
And a lot of them are finished buyers that are going in, so I think there'll be about seven more houses going up in the next 30 days, I think.
Wow, that's great.
It may be built up by next spring.
No, that's good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the extended deadline for the covenant for the Glen to 8/13/2014. Come up front, tell us what you'd like to do.
All right, well, the covenant's coming up in August, and we wanted to extend it for another year. What else?
Actually, we had, I think, in the letter, they wanted two years.
Two years.
So.
So it's a function of the status of the work that's been done thus far.
Yeah, yeah, there's still quite, I mean, a lot of work to do out there, and I think the owners are, you know, looking for someone to build it out.
Yeah.
And, you know, to have a deadline be August 2012 certainly isn't going to work, because nobody can build it that fast. So the two years makes sense, and it kind of tracks with the Permit Extension Act, so, you know, it seems like a good thing.
Questions on the board? Motion?
All right. Yeah, I read your recommendation, it means, like, it was part of what needs to be done, so.
Yeah, I think it's really, it really needs to be done.
Okay, I move to approve the extension of the time for completion of road and water infrastructure in the definitive plan covenant for the Glen from August 13th, 2012, to August 13th, 2014, as it has been infeasible for the applicant to meet the timeframe.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have been extended.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
You had to wait all that time. Hopefully it was interesting.
Thank you.
Now that you're doing your clerical duties, we'll let you continue with the calendar.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have a whole bunch of bills.
A whole bunch of bills.
Interesting bills, though. It's not your usual boring bills.
Okay. So are these all together, or?
No, each one is a separate bill.
Okay.
Each little pack of stuff.
All right, where's the... Okay, I move to pay $78.38 to WB Mason for bulletin board for the planning space, which is the new area where Laura moved into, and office supplies, cork tiles, and miscellaneous.
From?
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Okay, I move to pay $294.52 for two nights hotel accommodations for the MAPD conference in Springfield, Massachusetts. This was for Laura, staying over and attending that conference. And the bill is $294.52.
Couldn't sleep in your car, huh?
Well, it's two nights, actually, that's not bad.
It's pretty nice for Springfield.
If that were Boston, it'd be a thousand.
You couldn't park your car for that.
If you're going to say in Springfield, it was a better place.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And if anybody wants a little report on the conference at some point, I'll roll that out.
And how was the hotel, in case we're out that way?
It was pretty good.
Oh, good, all right.
So I move to pay $54.40 for the actual registration fee for that said conference.
That's actually mileage.
Oh, it's mileage, I'm sorry, it says reimbursement. Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't read far enough. For mileage for the MAPD conference in Springfield. So that is $54.40.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks, guys.
I know she's done an analysis, and it was cheaper to drive than it was to take the bus.
Or the train, even.
There's the bar bill.
Let's see what this is for, okay. I move to pay $108.54 to the community newspaper company for the legal ad for the 8 Claymore Terrace accessory dwelling that had to be put into the paper for public notice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And I move to pay $441.25 to Armory Engineers for their professional services from March through May 31st for the zoning map update.
Do I have a second?
Zoning map is basically all done. You guys saw that a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that completes the bills. We have approval.
Minutes?
Oh.
Need three signatures on it.
Yeah.
Better rookie clerk.
I know, we do. Sorry.
Just the point, we bring up the surety for Tilden Estates again and decide not to grant it now that Steve's gone? Reconsideration? Yes.
Hey, this is only my second day as a clerk, right?
You're doing great.
What we can do is, I'm sure Karen will type up some draft motions so that she can practice reading them.
I might need that.
Something to do on your way to work in the morning.
Well, I don't know if you should be reading in the car.
As long as you're not texting.
Okay, is there just the one here?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the Situate Planning Board meeting minutes from May 24th, 2012.
These are the ones that were sent out by email?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job, minutes.
So that is the...
Bring this to town plan report.
Okay.
County, anybody?
Couple of things, I wanted to let everybody know that Bill and I were supposed to meet with Barry Keppard from MAPC. MAPC is the Regional Planning Agency that we're, you know, we're part of the metropolitan Boston region, and-
Bill got tied up and never made it.
Bill got tied up and never made it, but I met with him, and it was kind of interesting. They're trying to get the town, whether that's the planning board, or the selectmen, or whoever it is, to identify areas that should be preserved forever for the long term in Situate, and areas where development should happen. So I sat down with him and gave him some ideas. He's going to be coming back to a planning board meeting sometime, probably in August or September. I don't know if you want to invite other boards into that meeting, just to see if anyone will come and participate. It might be a good idea. And I just wanted to pass out what my conclusions were, which I shared with Barry, and just so you all can see what my thinking was, and then, you know, just take it wherever you want to take it when he comes back.
Also, next Thursday, I have in my calendar to meet for the South Shore Coalition, which is part of the MAPD.
Right.
So I'm going there next Thursday.
Good, good, okay. Okay, I'm working on a grant application for the property that was voted to be purchased at town meeting, the Higgins McAllister property, just so people know that that's in the works. The, one of the older subdivisions we have, Kimberly Estates, is one of the ones that has some surety left on it. It has about $60,000 in surety. It's got a few little issues with the roads. It also has a walkway from that subdivision over to, I believe it's Pyramid Lane, to another subdivision, which is kind of a nice thing to have, and this walkway has fallen apart, but, not completely, but it's in a state of disrepair. And it's shown on the plan, so anyhow, make a long story short, I think that that one maybe makes sense for the planning board to, you know, begin the process of going after the surety. I mean, we'll have to put it on the agenda, you guys will have to formally talk about it, but I just- It was Dick Matthews. He is in Florida a lot of the year, and I've had a lot of trouble getting in touch with him, so, anyway. Scenic roads, you may have noticed when you drive in Norwell that they have some really nice scenic road signs. And Karen and Kevin Caverdy are both involved with Norwell in different ways, and I also thought this was a good idea to explore doing something for Situate that would be, you know, obviously not the same, but something also pretty and eye-catching that would help people understand that these are special roads. These aren't just every ordinary road. These roads really have a different status, and they're, hopefully, the status is that they're scenic. So what we're doing is we're looking into a design, and we're going to try to make this, get all the information to Tricia, because Tricia's going back to the CPC with an application that she tried to do last year for signage around town, for like, having something on 3A to tell people where the Lawson Tower is, or how to get to the Situate Lighthouse, you know, things like that. And she thought that we could, you know, blend this in with that, so.
Nice. My only comment would be that the signs in Norwell, or what it says, like scenic road, is so small. Like, it took me, like, I actually had to almost pull over and read it, because I kept thinking, what are those things? Because I couldn't read it.
That's a good point.
But you want to make sure the sign doesn't detract from the scenic quality of the road.
Right.
That would be counterproductive.
They're normal street signs.
Yeah.
But there's this little, just at the top, there's like a round arch to it, and it says scenic road.
I see, where this, it's-
And, but it's so small.
In combination with the street sign itself.
Yeah, it's just a normal green street sign, but there's a little, like, half circle.
Yeah, nice.
And, you know, for the life of me, I was like, what is that, what is that?
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't really think-
Once you read it, then you know what it is.
Then you know what it is, but I don't think that that was, I wish that ours were, my comment would be that maybe they'd be a little bit bigger, or a color change, something, because I do find the ones in Norwell, unless, the first time you're trying to figure out what that is, it was difficult.
Okay, that's good.
For an old person like myself who couldn't read the street sign.
The other thing I would mention is that they've gone to CPC, and they're putting low signs to identify bike trails to go between the major historical structures.
Oh, are they starting to work on that? Is somebody working on that?
Well, that's one of the things that was approved, and the concern that I have is, if, but historic buildings have certain signs, and I'm going to have scenic roads that have signs, there should be a commonality between all of them, so that these, the signs look the same, so that if you see the, a blue-white and sign, then you know that it's a town sign, and it's representative of either a scenic road, or access to a scenic site, or historical site.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a-
But that's not the way things are being done now. Right now, I've got the historical doing their thing, I've got CPC, you know, the bike people are doing their thing, and I've got multiple signs that are out there that, even the CPC signs are not consistent.
Yeah.
So it would be nice to have, you know, either a format, and then maybe, you know, the arch that says it's a scenic road, or it's access to whatever. So it provides some consistency, so one, as I see it, I know that it's a town sign, and it's giving me information, and I can look at it and tell me what it is, whether it's directions, or whether it's a scenic road.
Okay, I think these are just going to be like ordinary road signs. They're not going to be anything special, like a freestanding sign. It's just going to go, well, okay, well, give me some ideas on how to do that. And I just want to mention also this comprehensive permit change that's coming in for Stockbridge Woods. It's coming to the zoning board next Thursday also. It's coming to the Design Review Committee on Wednesday. And it was a little bit of a sales job to get the attorneys for this applicant to come to the design review, but, you know, we, I talked about how, you know, what a great process it is, how they, you know, see how to make the whole development more attractive, and more economical, and, you know, all these other great things, and they must have bought it, because I think they're going to go, so. So, anyway, that's it.
The final item for the evening, before we get Bob's motion to adjourn, is I sent out a copy of a letter that I got from Joe Norton, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, regarding the study meeting for 618, and I think you guys have all indicated that you're going to be able to, I think Dean is the only one that's not going to be here.
I'll be there.
Karen's posted a meeting, so we're clean to go, and we can participate in the discussion, so.
The agendas for the meeting are in folders.
So I think this is a good, it's going to be, hopefully it'll be a good working session. As I indicated in my note to everybody, that we've got a facilitator who's going to come in and be talking, facilitating, so we're going to be-
And I saw on the Mariner today that it was announced as well. It was in the papers, so that means everyone is, should be invited.
Selectmen are very conscious of open meetings now.
I wonder why. As an item, I also, you sent out the, for the ultimate position? Is there any update, or anything you want to say on that, or anything that we need to do?
Oh, we have that over to Bill.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll hold off until probably the first part of July before we come back and we advertise that. That way, we can come back up and set up time for the hearings, interviews.
Okay.
But in the meantime, if you know someone who wants to, just tell them to keep their eyes or ears open for it. At this point in time, I think we've got enough on our plate, so that we don't need to do it, right? Now that we've got you full-time, we're all set.
I'm a trial period.
Just the clerical function.
The other thing I wanted to ask, just quickly, since you were doing a town planning report on the Riverway condominiums. I know that they're entering their final phase. There was a retail component to that, that was, my understanding, very, very similar to the one that Ford is presenting. Do you know the status, or was there any kind of time limit that they had, or they were phasing it in, or, I was just curious.
It's kind of interesting you brought that up, and I'm not sure if it's for the same reasons that I heard about it, but I was contacted by- But I was contacted by an attorney for the family that owns the cemetery, and they were wondering about when the walkway is going to be completed. There's a landscaped walkway that's supposed to go through that property that's on the, on the, kind of the backside of the parking lot. It goes out to the Driftway, but it's not where the entrance is. It's on the other side. And the people who own that cemetery are really concerned that this is never going to happen. So I did call the, the developer and ask him, you know, what was going on? And was it connected to the plans for the retail building? Because it kind of makes sense that you wouldn't want to create this beautiful landscaped walkway and then go in with your bulldozers and, you know, build the foundation for the, for the retail building. So he said, yes, you know, it's all going to be done at the same time. And he thinks in the fall that he'll work on the retail building. But it, you know, to my mind, it really should be, it's, it's, it's part of the special permit. They're affordable units above that retail building that kind of tie into the whole special permit and how he got the number of units there because it's a planned development. And if you all want, we could, you know, think about send, you know, bringing him in and asking him, you know, maybe a little more pointedly than my asking him, you know, what he's, what he's going to do or send a letter to him and just say that there's a concern about, about the timeframes. I mean, I don't know. And that, you know, you're glad to hear that he's going to do it in the fall, and maybe he'd like to give you something and, you know, a little more firm, you know, explaining when he expects to build it. And if he's got some market information, you know, what is it? But, you know, just remind him that he's really required to build that.
I guess, in my mind, since this thing with Ford is going on, it just kind of makes sense that we kind of know what the whole
Yeah.
ecosystem, if you will, or the whole area.
Watershed.
Well, I mean, you know, with Green Bush, I mean, we've got a couple of things that are kind of, you know, in play right now. So it would be nice to know. So I'd advocate that if, depending on how you feel.
Yeah, I think we, let's.
I think that's a good idea.
Send them a letter.
Okay.
Send it over my signatures saying that we want an update in terms of, you know, time, a timeline of when he's going to do that. And your understanding is that the access to the cemetery is an integral part of that, and when that will be done.
Yep.
Laura, speaking of that, do we know what the retail building is targeted for? Is it truly retail? Is it office space? Is it?
I think they had talked about a branch bank, maybe a, you know, like a little mini ATM and tiny branch bank, something like that, or.
The reason I'm asking is kind of roundabout, but it occurs to me that the Ford development is looking at potentially some office space as part of the mixed-use component. And I'm wondering what the present vacancy rate on the Driftway is now for office space, and it's pretty darned high. And I'd hate to have more of the same kind of space developed and go vacant and also impact the chances of the existing buildings, you know, getting rented, rented out, which, which I think they ought to be.
Yeah.
I think that's a concern that I have on the whole Ford development, in other words, when it comes back out. I want to make sure that I'm providing commercial space, which is an integral part of the bylaw, but I'm providing something that can be utilized. I don't, I don't need to have apartments over an empty, empty office space.
Right. And you don't need office space available that's going to decrease the chances of the existing available office space not being rented out.
Agreed.
Is the, the Economic Development Committee, I know they were looking at, like, what was available. That's not really one of their charges is to like know, like, what, I mean, they were going to do something about. That was the consultant, right? That was saying, okay, what businesses are in town, and where are they located, and what do we need? I mean, that study might say we have an overabundance of, of commercial space in Green Bush if that is going forward.
Yeah, it might, it might. That's, that's a good, good point to bring up, too. This regional discussion of commercially developable as opposed to not areas, they should be in on that discussion. I mean, this.
Absolutely. No, they should definitely be invited to it. And if their consultant, you know, winds up coming up with different ideas, I mean, I think, I think whatever this plan is that the MAPC is working on can be, you know, adjusted to reflect that.
That's good.
So.
And as a side note on all these properties, we've been at work, we got this pedometer, and we're supposed to do like 12,000 steps a day, which have been woefully inadequate. But anyway, it's given me the chance to actually walk around all these properties, which has been really good. So I've walked around the Riverway several times, so I know exactly where you're talking about.
I haven't done a detailed analysis, but I would suspect that if you walked to Starbucks in the morning and you got your coffee and walked back, you'd hit your.
That's a little bit far for me. That's.
Yeah, but you'd have, you'd have steps to the bank.
You're talking about walking all the way across. But anyway, so I have, around Green Bush anyway, I certainly walked the Ford property multiple times, so it's very interesting.
Anything else? Bob has a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have a question on the meeting minutes. Is it just me that needs to be signed, or does there need to be three signatures? Okay, then I think this is all set.